Hi Betty.
Hi Kim.
How are you?
I'm good. I'm good. I can't stand all these meetings, every single Monday.
We're just getting started. Hi Kristen. Every single Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
I know Saturday.
Sometimes I'm clerking for the charter and I'm not making all of those meetings. I'm doing most of those minutes via video. It's tough.
Yeah, that it is. I don't envy you a bit if you're doing another meeting.
Yep, Charter, Budget, and Council.
Did you have a nice Easter?
I did. It was nice, quiet.
Oh, that's good.
How about you?
It was okay.
Did you cook a whole bunch?
No, my husband had a stroke yesterday.
Oh Betty, I'm sorry.
Well, it was a small one. He had a pacemaker put in on Friday. And he had to go off the Allocliff because he has AFib and it's known for causing strokes and that's what happened. But it's a mild one, just his right arm. Just the hand, so they think he'll get it back, which is a good thing, but he's in the hospital.
Oh geez, I'm sorry to hear it.
Yeah, so that ended my prime rib dinner. I was making-
Yeah, I hear that. My goodness.
Sorry to hear that Betty.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. That's nice of you.
I hope he has a quick recovery.
Oh, I think he will. He's pretty strong, even though he has all these ailments. So, that's a good thing. Wasn't it a beautiful day today?
It was. I had the windows open. It was nice.
Yep, me too. I still do, but it's getting a little chilly.
Yeah, I just closed mine not long ago.
Yeah.
Where's Michael?
Have to learn how you guys put a picture up like that. Instead of me just having to put this little guy up.
Um, I did mine by actually signing it to my Zoom account, but I think there's a way like right inside here.
Oh.
Um, I think, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask my, uh, one of my grandkids. I'll probably know.
They'll know, absolutely.
Yeah, definitely. So, I just haven't got around to it yet. But they look so nice rather than this thing.
Yeah, just the name.
Yeah. Here's Mike. Mick. Oh, he's here.
Hi Berita.
Hi Berita.
Hi.
Hi Sue.
And Sue. Hi Sue.
Hi Kim, how are you?
Hi Berita, I'm good. How about yourself?
Good, okay.
She went from good to okay.
I know, no, I'm just paddling along today.
Yeah, Mondays are sometimes like that.
Alright, here we are.
Ah, hello Berita.
Good evening. Hi Mick.
How you doing? That good? I thought I saw Ms. Gruen on here before.
She was on. What happened?
Don't know. I wanted to double check with her, make sure we do everything right on this thing.
I'm sure she'll be right back. She must have lost connection.
How you doing Kim?
Alright, how about yourself Mick?
I'm experiencing some printer difficulty. You guys couldn't hear me swearing in the other room, could you?
No, and your mic wasn't muted either, just so you know. We did not hear it.
I have, I, I, I think I demonstrate a lot of pa- uh, patience with people and living creatures. But inanimate objects, oh, that printer-
Can, um, can anyone direct me to, like quickly, if they know, um, an email that would have the finance report from the last time? Because I have questions, but I can't lay my hands on the report, so in case he has a question about what the questions need. Does anybody know where that might be?
Um.
I was going through my emails, can't find it.
Uh, ah, Kim, do you?
Um, was it from Scott?
Well, that's what I'm, I don't see it from him. I'm gonna guess it maybe was an attachment for the last legislative council meeting? Is that how we know the finance report?
I don't know. This is all, like, I can't say yet.
That's okay.
Let me, um, let me do a search and just see what I have.
Alright, it's no big deal. I just, he must already know what the, I have the questions. I just can't find the report, but it's his report, so he probably knows it.
Okay, I'm looking though.
It would take more than two minutes. Don't waste your time.
Okay. revenues and expenses, that's not it.
There's questions submitted on the previous finance report.
Evil and everyone.
Hi Justin.
How are you doing?
Hey Justin.
How's your hand doing, uh, uh, Miss Bonnades?
Um, it's getting better every week, thank you. Feeling pretty good.
That's good to hear.
Thank you.
Hi Austin.
Hi Berita.
How are you?
Good hanging there. How you doing? Okay?
Very good, okay, thanks. Hi Marjorie.
Hi Berita. Hope everyone had a nice holiday, weekend.
Thanks, you too.
It was beautiful.
Yeah, a lot of work coming up though, everybody, so, uh.
Is it really?
Big week. Get out of the food coma.
Was good though. It was glorious yesterday.
It was.
I wouldn't, no, I was in my kitchen cooking all day.
I hope not.
No, that's true. Had to clean up at 6:30 and then get everything cooking. Hmm, I'm just gonna give, I'm gonna go offline and give Ms. Gruen a quick, uh, see where she's at. I just wanna make sure we get this right this time. Right back.
Uh, Mick, she's, she's getting on now.
Yeah, I was just talking to her. She should be-
She was actually out in the attendees on her phone number, I didn't-
Oh, is that her?
Yeah, well, it was, but now she's not. She's gonna use her computer on.
Well, we might as well just get started then. Hopefully she'll be on, once we get going. Okay. Uh, I'll call to order this meeting of the Hand of Legislative Council at six, or I should say the special meeting of the Hand of Legislative Council at 6:52 PM. Ms. Renta, could you take the role?
Mr. Austin? Ms. Fias? Ms. Bonnades?
Here.
Mr. Caesar?
Here.
Ms. Klaus? Ms. Dolan?
Here.
Mr. Farmer?
Present.
Ms. Horsley?
Here.
Gary? Mr. McDowell?
Here.
Mr. McGary?
Present.
Ms. Row Lewis? Ms. Row Lewis is with us. I'm gonna mark it. Ms. Shoemaker?
Present, thank you.
Mr. Weber? Ms. Wetmore? She is also with us. I'm gonna mark her present. Eleven present, four absent.
Thank you very much, Ms. Renta. We do have a forum. We'll say our pledge of allegiance and have our moment of silence. Uh, Ms. Shoemaker, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America-
Of America.
And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, we do have one piece of public input. Uh, so we'll take a moment. It was emailed around to the council. Uh, it is available online. Ms. Renta, if you could just, uh, could share a screen with that, Ms. Renta, and we'll take, uh, three minutes. So it is presently 6:55. Uh, we'll close public input at 6:58. Oh, I'm sorry, I'll ask for, um, anyone from the audience. Thank you, Ms. Renta. And, um, we'll open up public input. Is there anyone, uh, from, uh, the attendees who would like to offer the council public input? If so, please raise your hand and you will be acknowledged for three minutes of speaking time. Is there anyone in the attendees, uh, who would like to address the council, uh, with public input this evening? Uh, Mr. Farmer?
Thank you-
I don't remember the public, Mr. Farmer, but, okay.
Now, uh, thank you, Council President. Uh, just a point of clarification. Are we opening up public comment, um, to the items or public comment in general?
Uh, I think we can go kind of both at this stage of the game. Uh, you know, we only have the two items. So, but, good point. Um, if there's anyone from the public who wish to speak to the council on the agenda item or, uh, under an item that falls into the purview of the council, uh, please raise your hand and you will be acknowledged for public input. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the council on an item on the council agenda or, uh, on an item that comes into the purview of the council? Please raise your hand. We acknowledge for public input. And, uh, one last time, uh, if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak to the council, uh, an item of public input, please raise your hand uh, and be acknowledged, uh, for three minutes of public speaking time. I see none. Uh, Mr. Hunt, if you would like to give public input, raise your hand, please. All right, uh, seeing none, I'm gonna close our public input session. Uh, I just have some very brief remarks before moving on to our regular agenda. Uh, just, you know, tonight's meeting was, uh, you know, called because, uh, we just wanted to be doubly sure as our, uh, Legislative Council Attorney, uh, Council to the Council, Mr. Mendig often says, uh, belts and suspenders to make sure that there's absolutely no question that what we have done is correct. Um, and I would just like to, ordinarily, we do not, uh, react to public input at all. We simply receive public input. But I would like to just clarify misconception. This meeting was not imposed, uh, on the council, but was rather, came about as the result of internal discussion, which, and we did consult with, uh, state just to be absolutely certain, but this was not imposed upon anyone. Uh, nor, uh, was this because of anyone's lack of personal ethical behavior. Uh, it was simply a technical issue that led us to this necessity of this meeting. And I would like to take this time to publicly thank our Legislative Council staff, particularly Ms. Renta and the staff, uh, that works with us in the mayor's office, because, uh, we tend to forget, these are still very difficult times we are operating under, uh, the working remote, uh, social distancing. It makes everything extraordinarily difficult and it's frankly, uh, nothing short of miraculous that Ms. Renta is able to guide our, our efforts and make sure that we are able to operate at all without Ms. Renta. This, uh, we, our ship of state would founder immediately. Uh, and we also need Ms. Gruen, uh, making sure, double checking, making sure that we're doing everything correctly. So we have a team, uh, that is working very hard behind the scenes, uh, in really difficult circumstances to make, to ensure that the business of the town is, uh, conducted efficiently, effectively, and honestly. And any implication to the contrary is, uh, erroneous. And I'll leave it at that. Uh, so, many thanks, Ms. Renta and Mr. Sandroff and Ms. Gruen, uh, for keeping us moving here. It is very difficult and, uh, your efforts are appreciated. Uh, having said that, we'll move on to our regular agenda. Uh, we have two items. Item one, in order ratifying all actions taken by Legislative Council on the agenda of March 29th for purposes of strict compliance with the posting requirements of Executive Order 7B, all of which matters were posted more than 24 hours prior to the date of this special meeting. May I have a motion?
No moved. Second.
Thank you by Ms. Wetmore, uh, discussion. Any discussion, Mr. Farmer?
Thank you, uh, Council President. I, I just wanna take this time to, again, thank Ms. Renta, uh, Attorney Gruen and, uh, Mr. Sandroff for all the work that they do. Um, and I will be voting in favor of this motion tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Further discussion. Uh, for the discussion on item one. Alright, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All favor of item one, please indicate by saying or showing aye. Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Item one passes. Item two, amendment to the reappointments of Phil Nista, Richard A. Pierce, William L. Donahue Jr., and Michael McManus to the Natural Resources and Open Space Commission for corrected expiration dates of February 1st, 2024. May I have a motion?
No moved.
Uh, something like Ms. Wetmore got in there first.
Second.
I was like, Mr. Farmer got in there first. Uh, discussion. Mr. Farmer?
Just in, in despair of Councilman Anis, just thanking again all of our public servants. In this case, I happen to know several of the names and, and I appreciate all the work and stewardship they've done to improve our wonderful town. So, thank you to everyone who gets involved and please find out if there's a border commission that interests you and get involved. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Um, and I'll just, also, I, I've felt the need when this has come out the past few times. We'd be remiss not to mention Mr. Nista's beard. It's remarkable. Further discussion. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item two passes. Uh, with no further, uh, business, I believe, uh, what we'll do is we'll adjourn this and we'll just continue on to our, uh, thank you, Mr. Farmer, we'll continue on to our, um, agenda, sorry, I do have a printing issue here, um, our Legislative Council Committee meeting, which will be chaired by, uh, Ms., uh, Dolan, there she is. Um, so I'll just have a motion to adjourn. May I have a motion?
No move. Second.
Uh, move, sounds like Ms. Marjorie's, Ms. Bonnades got in there first with Mr. McDowell as the second. All in favor of German, please indicate by saying, showing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Uh, we are adjourned at 7:06 PM. Uh, I will open up our council committee meetings and I just, one brief, uh, note uh, before handing off the, uh, Zoom control to Ms. Dolan. Uh, in discussion with Mr. Jackson and our finance team, um, and with Ms. Dolan. Uh, you know, we have had a practice where, uh, we have had, uh, input to the finance team via, uh, questions via, uh, written dialogue, uh, which has been important in, um, you know, as we adapted to these changing circumstances. Uh, it's been difficult for us to find the best way forward. Uh, with the confluence of events that are occurring now, uh, the audit, the present budget, uh, closing, this, ending this year's budget, there's quite a bit going on. Uh, Mr. Jackson has, uh, expressed a, uh, willingness to engage more in dialogue. Uh, now, I felt a little uncomfortable opening this up as this is Ms. Dolan's meeting, uh, but she did sort of agree, so Ms. Dolan will be, it's her meeting tonight, so she will be chairing, uh, the discussion that follows Mr. Jackson's, um, uh, finance report. Uh, I would say however, obviously there, um, some questions that require, you know, more input than Mr. Jackson would be able to uh, respond to in one evening. And also, uh, we will still have the written option available. Folks submit to Ms. Renta and she'll submit to Mr. Jackson. I'd also like folks to be mindful, you know, some of the questions, uh, questions that are specific about the budget, why don't we handle that during budget time? And questions about the finance, obviously everything is intertwined, uh, which is why Mr. Jackson suggested, uh, you know, why don't we engage in more dialogue? And to that end, I think that's, uh, a very good act and will help us, um, as we gain the information, we need to make our votes and decide on our budget. Um, speaking of which, don't forget tomorrow, uh, budget deliberations and budget deliberations Thursday and, uh, Wednesday, uh, Tuesday, Thursday, and I don't have the schedule in-
Saturday.
Saturday. Who could forget Saturday? Saturday. Who could forget Saturday? Thank you. And anyone who does have more public input for that, please send to Ms. Renta. There will be one more public hearing before final ratification of the budget. And that is all I have to say. Ms. Dolan, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. So let's convene the finance meeting at 7:10 PM. Roll call. Jaron Alston. Kathleen Shoemaker. Present. Austin Caesar. Present. Adrian.
Present.
Farida Row Lewis. There you are. And Betty Webber.
Present.
Thanks. All right, so we're going to begin with the budget update and the finance report from Mr. Jackson.
Thank you. Do you want to present the questions or do you want me to just kind of run through them, Madam Chair?
Well, you have them in writing, right?
I do.
Okay, I'll give anybody who's not following along or doesn't have them in writing, I'll give them a flavor. So we're going to start with the questions submitted from the previous finance report, which was from, I think, either the last Legislative Council or one before that. So the first question was asking about the $2.1 million favorable variance in your finance revenue.
Okay, thank you very much for the time. I apologize for last week. In the interest of full disclosure, I got the COVID vaccine and I was one of those who had a bad set of side effects from, which is why I was absent last week. The $2.1 million favorable variance appears to be a reference to the premium received from the issuance of bonds in August of 2020. When you issue bonds, depending on circumstances, you may get a bond premium on such. We did receive such and it was received in August of 2020. And it was identified as a note in the audit, but was not recorded at such time as a referendum.
Okay, and then there is a follow-up of it. What is your understanding of this event? I, do you agree that these funds are not to be presented as savings? I'm not sure if this was my question or if this came from someone else or a combination of folks' questions, but perhaps the misunderstanding was that the questioner thought that these were the funds from the savings of the debt restructure, not from the bond amortization. But you're saying this is, this is clearly related to the 2.8 premium from the bond?
That is correct, and I would not represent it as a savings in any way, nor frankly, would I think it is responsible over time, year over year, to incorporate such items in the operating budget. And you will see that there is no such reference to bond premium in the budget, even though after going a couple of years without a capital plan, we really need to put together some items for your, for your review because you can't keep things together with Band-Aids, can't keep bridges together with Band-Aids for terribly long. You gotta, you know, you gotta plan for the future. So, but, but there's nothing in the budget from an operating sense regarding bond premium.
Okay, and the bond premium was 2.8 million?
Yeah, 2.8, 2.9 in that.
If showing a favorable variance of 2.1, did we, what happened to the seven or $800,000? Why is it lower?
The, well, it goes back to the phrasing of question one. Right, it's, it's, it's actually 2.8, 2.9. But where we landed from a cash standpoint at the end of the fiscal year, June 30, 2020, when you add that to our deficit, there's about a $600,000 delta. And so we end up, you know, cash positive at the, you know, middle of August by that $600,000. And so I think that's where that 2.1 is generated.
Oh, so the deficit from last year goes into the finance revenues?
No, I'm not sure. I, I'll, I'll be honest, I never, I never gave a figure of 2.1. I'm trying to reverse engineer the 2.1.
Oh, okay. Sorry, and I can't lay my hand on the actual report. So.
It seems, it seems like it's.
Say what the true, what the budget deficit is that we're facing right now in this finance report?
Yeah, so, so moving on to question three. Yeah, you could call it, you could, you could call it eight million, but in order to do so effectively, you would have to presume that the COVID dollars aren't gonna hit our bank this fiscal year, which is the exact opposite of everything we're hearing out of Washington. So, you know, not to, not to, you know, not to try to create you know, some sort of, you know, tremendous windfall out of arc, but presuming, presuming we get what we have been promised and presuming that it hits the bank accounts before the end of the fiscal year, we will actually be, we are actually trending favorably in terms of where we end cash on hand, fund balance at the end of this fiscal year.
Okay, well, that is good news to hear. However, I think it's important for us as a group and especially because we're heading into budget season to really focus on operating revenues and expenses. So thank you for sharing the good news and we're pleased to hear it. So the deficit is roughly running at $8 million for the current year?
Yeah, that's right. We're, but there are, yeah, there are a couple of caveats to that. One is because of the extension on residential taxes, which is where we make most of our revenue. We actually won't have good numbers on that for probably another four weeks. And so we'll know where we land. I know last, last week, Mr. Capelletti indicated that, you know, typically we would, you know, most communities land around 98. We land around 98.5. Right now, today, we're sitting at a shade above 95. But we still have four weeks of collections where we would typically have already been able to lock those in and start to look at other items. So that's a, that's a significant piece of our revenue. We still have the outstanding 2.5 million in concessions that were in the budget, which have not been locked in as of this point. There certainly been progress, but I can't, I can't disclose where that is right now. And a lot of the department, and the third piece that we were missing last time I, I think I spoke to this group was departmental revenues and some of them, such as town clerk, have been running really hot and some of them have not. So they kind of wash each other out a little bit. It's not as big an issue as it was, I think, when I spoke to you in February.
Hi. I see Dr. Horstley has a question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson and Ms. Dolan. Thanks for allowing me to speak, even though I'm not on the committee. I just wanted to, to make sure I understood that you are not expecting us to actually be in deficit this year, given those other things that we should see coming with property tax and medical. Is that correct?
That's correct. I did not mention medical. We made a very hard push toward HSA over the last couple of years and so we're still with our consultants trying to make sure that we understand the dynamics, the seasonal dynamics of the HSA. But yes, we're expecting a seven-figure, I don't even want to call it surplus, seven-figure favorable variance in medical.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Okay, Mr. Farmer, you have a question for Mr. Jackson?
To thank you, Chairwoman, two things. One, I just wanted to acknowledge Mr. Austin and make sure that he's reflected for the record. But two, just a point of clarification. Did we open public comment for this committee?
No, we did not.
Okay, I, I, I just wanna, I don't know how we proceed, but I wanted to make sure that that happened, because I don't want to conflate the time. So I just wanted to flag that. So thank you, Chairwoman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McGary.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. I would just recommend going back. You know, once we complete the finance report, you can just open up the public input session.
Like the plan, thank you.
You know, a little topsy-turvy, but that's okay. Ms. Groon, that's okay? Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Good catch.
Okay, and then it looks like the next question, Mr. Jackson, comes from the audit report that we received. And there is deficits in other funds. How does the administration plan to pay for the deficit in these other funds?
Thank you for the question. We, we do have in the audit deficits in, in, in funds. They are, they are representative of a snapshot in time. And so there's a lot of timing that goes into those, you know, public safety grants, human services grants, et cetera. One that is not really subject to timing is a new one, a new entry in our audit, which is the ice rink. And so I'll, I'll jump into the ice rink on that one. So let me actually go backwards for one second. A lot of these are grant-based. And they're reimbursement grants. We do the work, we pay the money, we apply for the grant. We get the grant, the grant restores the funding. So that's when I say timing, that's what I mean. Items like the ice rink are a little bit different. It's been developing a deficit over time and we actually kind of know the reasons why. The reasons why we continue to, even though it's under private management, we we treat it as a public access, or I'm sorry, a public asset. And so we do things like subsidize ice time for the high school and, and for Hampden youth hockey.
Mr. Jackson, I think that the questions I have aren't really related to why there's a deficit, but just how, what is, how are we going to fix them?
Okay, yeah, fair enough, fair enough. So here's what we did in the upcoming budget. The rink costs us a little over $400,000 to run. Just run, just, you know, for everything that we contribute to it. So we inserted into the proposed budget for upcoming year the management fee that's required by contract. We also included the utility cost of about $153,000 a year. So those are covered on the, on the expenditure side. And then we will use the revenue side to eliminate the deficit. So we expect revenue of about $160,000. So that's going to go directly to reduction of that deficit.
Well, so you're saying it's included in next year's budget in parks and recreation, I imagine?
The two, it's in finance, public works, purchasing, maybe recreation. But yes, the, we, we've, we, we feel that we've captured all of the expenditures and we've incorporated them. So everything that comes in the revenue side can go directly to deficit mitigation.
So it's a very confusing issue. And the questions, I will read them. Just to make sure we cover them all, because I don't think we're quite. I appreciate you informing us about it, but I think what we're looking for, and I will read the questions, is more of an actual report. Instead of us trying to hunt and peck and find those line items, we're interested in understanding what, what the contract said, that, what they were supposed to share with us. And if you can show us, I guess, where those funds go into the budget and then where they're going to be taken out of. And then, while I understand you're saying that the, the future income should be offsetting those expenses, but how are we going to resolve the $790,000 deficit in the fund today? Because the auditor said that that one and the tornado fund, which I think we call public safety, need to approach zero over, he said several years, so.
He said several years.
Yeah, several years. So is that three maybe? So do you have the, I'm going to read the questions out loud for anyone who is following or any Legislative Council members who don't have them. We wanted to see the bank statements from the rink manager and we want those matched to our revenue receipts from the town. And we wanted the expenses for the rink, including utility costs that may be accounted for elsewhere in the budget. See what the cost for those meters are and then any repair or maintenance invoices. And those were specific issues that the, came up in our audit discussion when we received the auditor's report. So.
So I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you the biggest piece of it, which in your budget books is on page 56. Or 10580, object to be determined, ice rink management fee, $257,000. That's a new account, an account that did not exist before. That, that, that is, that is an element to us reducing sort of this cross chatter on the accounts and saying, okay, this, we're treating this as expense and we're going to take the revenue and put it toward the deficit. So that's the biggest one. Utilities is the second biggest one and depending on how you treat refrigeration, that's the third biggest one. But that is going to allow us to sort of clear the decks and allow us to accept the revenue that comes in when they're able to reopen. and allow us to accept the revenue that comes in when they're able to reopen, you know, fully certainly, and apply those revenues, those gross revenues that are ours by contract to reducing the deficit that you saw in the audit a couple of weeks ago.
I see what you're saying. So you're putting in the, the gross expenses and then the revenues will?
The revenues will be applied.
So they're going to go into the other fund, not into the budget. They, we will not, those revenues coming into our operating budget when we look through the budget book?
Exactly. They're not on the revenue side. They will simply go to the fund to reduce that deficit.
Right, great. So your plan is to roughly reduce that deficit over four years at, well, I guess, five or six years at 160 per year?
Right.
Okay, so we'll be approaching zero. And I imagine you'll have some idea of how to do the tornado one as well?
Oh, yeah, the, the tornado one, I have to dig in a little bit more. Those FEMA expenses can be a little bit challenging in, in terms of the timeline for reimbursement. So before putting Hampden tax dollars into it, I just want to double check and make sure that there's nothing more from the feds that we, we shouldn't be looking at there.
That sounds great. I'm going to let someone else ask a question so that we can keep this moving along. But, so the only thing that is missing is the items kind of from the auditor saying that he wants this piece audited. I imagine you're working on that.
Absolutely. And then we, we are in touch with the auditor on a regular basis.
Dr. Horst.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Jackson, for those explanations. I just want to understand, when we have questions about the ice rink going forward in our budget deliberations, when is the appropriate time to ask those questions?
I think it's fair to ask them of me when I'm before you or of Mr. Caesar when he's before you.
Okay, wonderful. I just want to kind of clear this up going
Wrong door, as we like to say.
Well, I didn't, I just don't want to waste anybody's time, so let's, I will direct them to, to, to you two professionals. Thank you.
Ms. Bonnety?
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. I am not on the finance committee, so thank you for recognizing me and my question. So, Mr. Jackson, you said that the management fee for the ice rink was 287,000?
Two fifty-seven.
Oh, two fifty-seven, okay. So, um, it had been two fifty. I, I thought it was going to be two sixty-five this year, according to the contract.
No, I, I actually, frankly, I think, I think I missed a number on that one. It should be, I have a little flag in my folder here for the supplemental. It should be two fifty-seven-five.
Okay.
Off by five hundred.
Still lower than I thought. I thought it was going up 15,000 this year of the contract.
It, it does, the, it's a, it's a long-term contract, and it does go up again. But for this year, it goes up to two fifty-seven-five.
Okay, and is there a way, somewhere where we can view the contract?
Yes. I can, I can scan it and send it over to Ms. Renta for distribution.
Wonderful. Thank you. That's all.
I think I sent it. It should be in your, I think I've sent it a few times, but we can send it again. I, I think it's in your council files.
I, I just took a quick peek to see if there were
Send it again, because we sent
Contracts, but I don't know if that specific contract is in there, Sue.
Be happy to send it again. We, yeah, I've got it readily available.
Awesome. Thank you.
Well, I, I trust Sue's version better than I trust my own. I'll let her handle that one.
Mr. McGary?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, you know, we, we're focusing in on the numbers. I hope everyone, you know, was able to, you know, get their number of questions answered, and, and if not, please continue after. But I, I do think it's important that we not lose sight of the why of the deficit. So, Mr. Jackson, just quickly, the deficit exists because the town of Hampden is in the business of running an ice rink or in the business of subsidizing hockey for the youth of Hampden?
Yeah, the, the, the second is, is very accurate. We subsidize at a rate of around $150 an hour for our local programs. And we do that so that, you know, in this, in this great town, kids learn to skate, they learn to, you know, play a, a team sport where a lot of people from here have, have achieved success. If we don't want to do that, I think it's worthy of a, of a community conversation.
Thanks. I just don't want us to lose sight of that. You know, as we're talking about the numbers and, you know, how much does it cost? There's, there's a reason for the cost, you know, we also, you know, we spent, I forget the exact numbers, but a million dollars on the new football field and more money on the, the rehabbed baseball diamond. You know, these are things that we do, because it's part of our process. And just one more question. Mr. Jackson, has the ice rink ever turned a profit for the town of Hampden?
No.
I didn't think so. I mean, it just, I just want us, when we're framing this discussion, to keep in mind, it's not necessarily that we are looking that we're going to have money coming out of this, but it is a cost. And there's a reason for the cost. So I think it's very important that we keep an eye on, that we make sure we're getting the best deal possible. And all the questions tonight were good, and you know, we're checking to make sure that they are vendors holding up their end of the bargain, and we are, you know, running it as efficiently and effectively as possible. But, you know, there is a reason it runs a deficit, and hopefully we can get in there, be more efficient, find better savings, make the building more environmentally friendly. You know, there's lots of things to work on. But, you know, I think the why is still important. So, thank you.
All right. Dr. Horst, do you want to say more about the rink?
I do. I'm sorry to have to, I, I asked the question about who I should ask questions to, but after Mr. McGary's comment, I just want to clarify what my questions will be. So my daughter is a tier-one ice hockey goalie. She's going into her ninth grade year next year, and so we've spent a lot of time at a lot of ice rinks around the state of Connecticut and beyond, and ice time is expensive and it's hard to get. So what I will be asking about, and I hope that can be provided, is who is using the rink and when and how much are we charging? How much of the time is used for what, when? And how much of Hampden youth is using the rink? And how much are we subsidizing? Because those are the kind of questions that are going to make the public feel comfortable subsidizing, if that's what is really benefiting our town, or just paying a vendor that isn't really using the rink at an optimal use for our town. And so I really want to make sure that this $250,000 that we're spending every year is useful, and the almost now a million dollars that we're going to have to pay going forward is what Hampden wants to spend with its money. And so those are the questions I have, and, you know, no need to answer tonight, but I will ask those of Mr. Jackson and Mr. Caesar as we go forward. Thank you.
And thank for the clarification on those questions. It's very useful.
And, and, Mr. Jackson, that, I guess, is what the report that the council was hoping to see asking for that two A and two B. You know, they wanted to see, you know, Dr. Dr. Horstley is, you know, saying, yes, let's look at it going forward, but in order to, to look at it going forward, we need to look at the historical. So who's used the rink for the past few years, and how much did they pay? And, you know, is, is there any growth we can find there? Mr. Austin? Mr. Austin, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Dolan. Um, it's, it's sort of a follow-on on some of the questions that you've already asked, and I know, Mr. Jackson, you talked about how to turn the ice rink around on that you've incorporated the expenses in here, so they wouldn't obviously be fees that we were unaware of in prior budgets or that the budget didn't incorporate before, right? So that's seemingly the answer to say how we're going to not be caught by surprise by it's actually in the budget and expected. On the audit report, I do remember the auditor saying that we had a number of years, if we did run a deficit in the general fund, that there was a compliance issue that we may address. And my question is, is that, one, Ms. Ms. Dolan said, asked the, for the plan to cover the deficit going forward, in what amount of years? Is there a specific number of years that you already know that we're looking to cover the current deficit in?
There is not a specific number, Councilman. And so that's why we're going to start out with just taking all of the revenue and applying it to the deficit. The auditor said several. The document that I have in front of me says three.
I thought it was three. I thought it was three.
There's, there is, there's no specification for three. So what Mr. Capelletti said last week was you have to be moving towards zero. You have to approach zero. And so I have a high degree of confidence that we can do, we can, we can take $150,000 off of that deficit in the next fiscal year, simply based on revenue. And if we do that, then we can time it out for the next few years to make it less impactful, presuming that the council wants to continue moving in this, in this direction. We could resolve this issue in probably 24 months if the community conversation comes back and says, no more subsidies. But I'm not sure that we're ready to go there just yet, which is why we need a little bit of time, I think, to have that conversation and see what the returns look like.
Being that you think the ice rink being the major driver of this.
Yeah, well, I mean, yes, yes, for this, for this $790,000 deficit that we're looking at, that we need to do something about. We have a plan for year one, but we also think that it's, it might take a little bit more time to effectively engage the community in terms of what does, what does ice time look like in the town of Hampden moving forward?
In the report that Ms. Dolan is mentioning, if, if possible, could you help me find the regulation that specifies the guidance that we have to be compliant with this? For the general fund to run negative, because he mentioned that if we do it multiple years in a row, we run the risk of a compliance, a significant compliance issue. I'm not finding that regulation that I was looking for.
Yeah, that's, that is a, and that, that's really a question for the auditor, because it's not, it's not statutory, it's not, it's not a regulation. It is a, 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 a principle of, of the General Accounting Standards Board. Gatsby, who can sometimes be our our masters. They say this is what you should do. You should approach zero on this fund. Now, if you don't, there's no, there's no penalty for non-compliance, except that when you go to the rating agencies,
Yeah.
Then, then you get dinged for that. So we try, we do our best to comply with it. But it's, it, it's not like there's a, there's a penalty for non-compliance.
Okay, so that's where the clarity I need is, because I, I understand Gatsby fully, but I thought he mentioned that it was a regulatory issue, specifically not, not an accounting issue, meaning that it would be statutory. That's why I'm searching for compliance. You don't get a compliance issue or hang on you for accounting matters.
That is accurate. That is accurate. How you are treated by OPM and the rating agencies is a, is a different Yeah, yeah. And so I'll, I'll, I will, I will take a deep dive, Councilman. But having, having worked at OPM, I, I, and having reviewed 169 communities audits, I've never seen a penalty, a specific penalty for, for not, not compliance. It doesn't, it doesn't strike me as a compliance issue is, is what I'm, what I'm saying. I got to go back and listen to Mr. Capelletti's presentation and see if I can filter out where he said that. But I, that, that's not, that's not something that I would, I would, I would be that I'm gonna, I'm gonna lose sleep over today. I might lose, lose sleep over tomorrow, but not today. But even when he, when he directly spoke, he said he has to approach it over several years, which is, which is not the kind of language you use for a compliance issue. Like, if you run a deficit, you have to fix a deficit. Right? Now, that is a statutory and compliance issue. Straight up, easy. You go right to it. You can point to it. This one, you know, something that's off the general fund is a very, is typically treated as a different animal.
Okay, if, if you, if you would, if you do find that that is the case, could you offer me some assistance in reviewing that as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty, um, so moving along, the next question, number four, says, an explanation of the $1.2 million savings in the debt service line. Budgeted for the full debt service payment so that the $7 million savings would flow into the general fund. Is this what you are referring to as savings? And if so, how did it go from 7 million to 1.2 million?
This one is a, this one is a little bit tricky. So the original plan was to do 6 million in year one, 7 million in year two, 8 million year three, which is 21 million. But the plan also called for 17.1 million, which you can find on page 41 of the official statement from July of 2020. And so the reason for that discrepancy is because the town fairly represented that it was going to run a deficit in fiscal year 2020. And so there was space built into the plan for deficit mitigation, understanding that if you have a deficit, you have to fix it. And so that deficit was pegged at 4 million. It ended up at 2.2 million. So let me look at this question again. So that's, so that seven actually went to four for deficit mitigation, or, or three and change for deficit mitigation. Not savings, not savings by any stretch of the imagination, but deficit mitigation, because it's, it's required. That $1.2 million differential is what's going to come before you shortly, which is a very straightforward refinancing. I see the word restructuring kind of through the questions. And there will be a restructuring likely coming before you, but not for a few months. What we will be presenting in short order is a straight refinancing, a straight interest reduction, no change in, in terms, just dropping the interest rate and saving the money. Dropping the interest rate and saving the money. And so that is the one point two million.
Hi, um, I, if it's okay with the, um, author of this question, I'm not sure, um, so please speak up. Um, but it seems like for, for this question and the next one, which I will read out loud. It seems like we can have a more in-depth discussion about. Question number four and number five, when the administration presents their new plan. It does say. I'm just going to read. Question number five as well. And then, um, if it's okay with whoever the author is or any, anybody else on council, we can ask all of them in the new, in, in the new plan when Mr. Jackson's ready to present this. But, um, there is one question that relates to the budget, so I do want to read it to make sure we are set for next week, this week. Um. Number five says a debt restructured mentioned by Mr. Galarza. Is this a new restructure being proposed, or was he referring to the May twenty twenty restructure? If this is a new one, which you've now confirmed it is. When can council expect to hear the details of such restructure, which you gave us the answer? Thank you, in a couple of months. And the last question was, if this is a new restructure, are those savings already part of the proposed budget for twenty one and twenty two? I think it was that last question that I wanted to, um, get an answer to since we'll be doing budget deliberations, I think as soon as tomorrow night.
Yes, yes, we are. I'll, I'll see you tomorrow. Um, uh, so, you know, just a, a couple of points, um. We're looking at this as a refinancing, which is the simple one, and then a restructuring, which is a little bit more complicated. Um. Uh, whenever we don't do the refinancing based upon, uh, markets, we're actually. Losing money or we're spending money we don't have to have, depending on how you look at it. Uh, which is why we're going to come, we, we bifurcated those things. So we're going to come in with a refinancing and then we're going to come back a couple of months later. Uh, with a debt restructuring and the new issuance of money. So we're going to blend the new issuance. With, uh, restructuring and, and smooth out our, 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 our debt payment path. Um. So that, uh, should be, uh, we're, we're still sizing it out what we can do, and then we'll go back to the departments and get their, get their, um. I hate to call it a wish list, but for ease and comfort, I'll call it a wish list. And then we'll figure out, um, what the mayor is willing to, uh, uh, present, uh, in a capital improvement plan. This is, uh, this is. Not those. The restructure and new money will not impact the twenty two budget. Those, those payments will not come through until twenty three.
Okay, so there are no line items of savings that we need to consider as part of this next budget.
That's correct.
Okay, um, Mr. McGary.
You was Dolan, I, uh, just wanted to. Uh, mention we did schedule the twenty first as a, a day or, or the budget deliberation. Uh, to devote to this as it is complicated. Um, and requires a, a lot of in-depth conversation. And I understand the plan is, um, you know, there is a new plan and there's a lot of consideration there. So I don't know if that's helpful. To think about, okay, you know, the twenty first, we can have a real enough conversation or we can re. We can retitle the evening if we want to think about the deficit mitigation plan versus the debt restructure. Or what have you, but that, that night itself has been set aside. Uh, for more in-depth conversation on this, as I think, you know, as you mentioned, it's pretty important. Uh, when we talk about our, uh, our budget in general.
Alrighty, I think we've got that one covered. I don't see anyone else, um, who needs to give feedback. So moving on to question number six, it's. Number six of seven for everybody, so getting there. Um. The collection of private duty police receivables. They were outstanding at the time of audit. Have we now collected a hundred percent of those receivables? And if no, why not?
Uh, they are not fully collected. Um, uh, uh, significant. We probably have, I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip to the end on this one. Um, we probably have. About two hundred thousand dollars worth of. Uh, uncollected receivables. In police extra duty. Uh, the. So what's? You know, what, you know, what makes up the rest of it? Some of it has actually been prepaid, and so we are working. To, um, reconcile those accounts. Some of them are really, really old. Like more than six years old. We just never cleaned them out of the system. Uh, you know, and so some of them are assigned to companies that no longer exist, for example. Uh, and so we're, uh. Uh, based upon the audit, we're, we're cleaning it up. But. You know, if, if, if you were to, to. Kind of compel me to give a number as to what do you think is actually collectible? Um, it's about two hundred thousand dollars. And we're working on cleaning that up and, uh, we'll be working with, uh. Uh, with both folks in the finance office and the, the town attorney's office to. It to effectively collect those dollars.
So, um. I imagine through this exercise, we are being careful to not. Let it get to this state again. And so in addition to cleaning up old receivables, are we keeping current on anything? That's happening now and keeping everything under thirty days collecting right before we do another job with these vendors and contractors?
Yes, Madam Chair, uh, we are, uh, uh, we are endeavoring to do that. Um. We don't, oh, we don't always know, right? So, so you do the net thirty. You give them another ten days to respond and. Sometimes they're there. Every once in a while, they're not. We don't want it to get to this point. Absolutely. Um. And, and so we're, we're going to be diligent. About, uh, those collection processes and. Yeah, I, I've worked this in a couple of different communities, and so there's a way to get there. The hundred percent referenced in, in question six is. I- i- isn't. I- i- isn't necessarily achievable, but it is a goal that we should strive for. Uh, and, and, and that net thirty. Um, on the bill means something. And we have to make sure that we, we dig in, uh. Wherever we can to make sure that. Uh, who we achieve that collectible.
Okay, and one last thing about that, Mr. Jackson, is there something that we should be doing on the front end? I'm not sure who's. Um, agreeing for the, agreeing to do the extra duty. Is there something that, you know, perhaps finance coordinates with the police department or? Who, whoever authorizes the extra duty before they do it to make sure that people are going to pay us?
Um, it runs through PD. Um, and you know, so they, so they sign their slips and. You know, they, they presume that we're dealing with quality actors and most of it is, most of it are known. They're known commodities, most of it. It's those. It's those little ones that, that, you know, I, I think we're getting a little bit hung up on. You know, some excavation service somewhere. Who? Yeah. They have two or three LLCs and they build the one and then they operate on the second.
Who, who did you say it runs through? Purchasing?
Uh, no, uh, PD, PD and Finance.
The police department.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I can imagine that their plate is rather full and that they're focused on public safety and they're not good at. You know, checking the credit of, uh, XYZ excavation company, you know, just perhaps there's an internal control we can put in place before we. Offer to do, you know, so many jobs, we've, we've run their credit or, you know. Sort of like what you do if you were selling a. Uh, something on credit, you know, even if it was a good versus a servant. All right, um, no other questions on that. And lastly, we come to number seven, which is the Economic Development Department. Please provide a detailed cost breakdown of this expenditure from ED. Um, it is already one hundred percent expended. What does this amount pay for? And it lists the, um, account number. Um, and the expense is called Hampden Economic Development Corp. for fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, so, um. There are various reasons why the town. Uses intermediaries, uh, to do certain types of projects, especially when there is environmental issues. Um, we do not want to be entitled. Uh, internal title on an issue with, uh, uh, an environmental, um. Potential liability. So we have used for many years Hampden Economic Development Corporation to engage in such. Uh, on our behalf. Um, so, uh, we, what we typically do is every July, uh, we issue them a payment. That reflects what the Legislative Council has authorized us to deliver to them. Uh, and so they use the, those funds in, in various and sundry ac- uh, activities. Legal, accounting, audit, surveying, engineering, and the big one is insurance. Because typically they're, um, environmentally compromised property, so the insurance is critical. Um, so, um, in the fifty thousand dollars. Uh, twenty four thousand, five hundred and fifty five dollars has gone to insurance. Ten thousand, four hundred and seventy six dollars and twenty five cents has gone to surveying and, and engineering. Six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars has gone to audit. Three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars has gone to accounting. And four thousand, eight hundred and sixty eight dollars and fifty cents has gone to legal.
Thank you for that accounting, um, Mr. Caesar.
Is there anywhere else in the budget this is funded besides this line item? Or is this the only location for the, uh, HDC, uh, this, this, this particular, um. Line item, I guess. Well, I'm trying to figure out the wording for it. Is this the only place, uh, for funding for this? And the whole budget?
Yeah, uh, uh, Mr. Caesar, uh, this is the only. A line item in the budget, uh, for this. Um, the corporation itself. Uh, earns additional revenue off of the projects that they run, but not through the budget or through the taxpayers of the town of Hampton.
Are there any stipends that are provided for this? Department of this position? Is there any, any stipends paid out from anybody, uh, anywhere else in the budget, or is this the only location for this?
This is the only location.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Jackson related to his finance reports? Or related to whatever you want to ask? Uh, thank you, Mr. Jackson. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, uh, Madam Chair, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to, uh, stand for the appointment. Uh, would you like me to exit the meeting, uh, before we get to item number four on your agenda?
Um, I don't have an opinion about it. Um, it's perfectly fine with me if you stay on. Um, I guess we should ask Attorney Gruen if there's any. Rules or regulations about that.
Well, hi, uh, good evening. Um, on. There, there's no, um, that, that's up to the committee. Uh, if it were an in-person meeting, the applicant, the, um. Uh, acting, uh, person is often in the audience. Um, I think Mr. Jackson is entirely up to you.
Thank you.
Um, so. We are going to sort of go backwards here since I missed the public comment section. So. Is there any that would like to submit public comment? To speak to any of the agenda items for tonight? Would anyone like to speak to an agenda item tonight? All right, so for the third time. Would anyone like to speak to the agenda for tonight?
Uh, Councilwoman.
I am not seeing anyone from the public raise their hands.
I. Yeah, just to wear, uh, a belt and suspenders as, uh, Attorney Mednick said. Uh, I am speaking on public comment rather than, uh. On the committee, um, so. Uh, if that is okay with you.
Yes, please proceed.
Great, thank you. Um. So I, I had a couple of questions, uh, uh, Director Jackson. I, I, I guess a couple of questions that I did have, uh, were. Uh, if we are doing a practice of shoring up accounts. Uh, before it gets to us in the case of the ice rink. How are we, uh, documenting that so that the council can have a full picture? Of the, uh, uh, potential financial ramifications? Um. So I get, the first question is, if we're doing this as a practice. How often are we doing a practice? How are we documenting it? And are we doing it for other, uh, uh, line items?
Um. So, so that's a little bit. Of a broad question. So we, uh. We. We do submit.
Point of order, point of order. Is there ever an instance where a public comment is addressed by a commissioner? Or someone in the administration? This is a public comment. Am I not, am I mistaken? Point of order.
That is well taken, uh, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Horsley.
Doctor Horsley, please. Thank you.
Uh. Councilwoman Horsley. Uh, so I will ask my questions and. Uh, have, uh. Director Jackson get back to me.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Mr. McGary?
Um, yeah, I was just going to simply say public comment is ordinarily. Uh, we receive public comment, uh, but don't respond to it.
That, that is a good point. So I, everyone needs reminder. So I thank you for reminding me. Um, so I guess my question is then, and, and seeing that this is a bigger, uh, question. Um, I guess it makes sense for, uh, Director Jackson to get back. Uh, so the questions are. Uh, that question again, uh, uh, about how often?
Why don't you submit them? Um, since we're in public comment, why don't you go ahead and submit them? You can submit them just like the, the regular practice we've been doing. You can submit, submit them to the whole council or to me. Um, and I'll get them to Miss Renta who gets them to Mr. Jackson. Or you can send, submit them directly to Miss Renta. However you prefer.
Okay, I was just going about the process as I, uh, conferred with Attorney Mednick. So I will, seeing that is your commission. Uh. Chairwoman, I will do. What you want me to do, but I'm just making it clear that. I confirmed with Attorney Mednick. Uh. Before having this conversation. So I, I will confer, uh, with you.
Well, thank you so much for your consideration. Um, and I think unfortunately you just sort of. Missed when we were talking about any questions, um, and now we're in the public comment section. So. Let's just keep moving along. Uh, Ms. Lewis.
Thank you, um, Councilwoman Dolan. Um, just one thing I wanted to share. On here, if, if anyone wants, um, states their name to be called, um, I would like to see that those individuals be called by that name. Um, we need to respect each other. Um, when we're here and we're talking and we should not. Make decision about what someone needs to be referred to. Because we don't want that to happen to us. So let's kind of, um, hold that true. And don't be the one that's out there banging the drum and then disrespect individuals, um, when individuals ask to be respected. So I just want us to hold that tone. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, keeping in mind that we're in the public comment section, Mr. McGary.
Thank you, yes, I just did want to clarify. It has been our practice as we met for many years on the council, just adding a little context here, I'll be, I'll try to be very brief. That when we all sat in one area, it was, it was our, for many years, as far as I can recall, that sort of the council met, there were individual committees, but the entire council was there. And technically, that entire time, yeah, for, to address the, the committee, you should be, if you're not a member of that committee, public input would be an appropriate time to address that committee. We did change things up a little differently here tonight because of the Mr. Jackson's illness, which I can happily confirm, I got my second shot Thursday. And it was, it was a rough couple of days after that. But, hey, worth it. But we did kind of change our policy a little bit tonight at Ms. Dolan's, thanks to her generosity with her committee, because he did miss that night. So it was a little bit different tonight. But yes, ordinarily, public input would be a time. Someone not on the committee could address that committee. But our practice has always kind of been that, you know, people not on the committee can talk. But technically, if we were very, very strict to Robert's rules, if Mr. Gagler are still with us, he'd probably agree. If you're on the committee, you can speak. If you're not on the committee, you probably should not. But that has not been our practice. And I think that's, just, just to clarify how we've sort of done things for a while.
Mr. McGary, thank you, but I think you made it murkier, murk, murkier. Because now it appears as though Mr. Farmer should be speaking during public comment. And so we should allow him to speak.
Uh, he's free to speak during, us during public comment. It, you know, it's not, he's not on this committee. So technically, he's a member of the public and he can speak, but, but there shouldn't be an expectation of a reply.
Okay, so fair enough. Mr. Farmer, the floor is yours again.
I, I apologize, I'm just trying to make sure that I am following the rules to the best of my understanding. So I apologize for the difficulty. So, and I forgot that I should not be receiving. So old habits die hard, so I apologize. So thank you. So there was a question on getting the information of how often we are shoring up accounts? And when we are doing that, how is that documented? The next question in terms of the, the golf course, how are we mitigating the losses there? And do we have a plan similar to the ice rink to address any shortfalls? And the last question, just to be succinct, in terms of the Economic Development Corporation, do we have documentation that these costs are inquired on projects that have, that are actively related to the town? Or are currently being worked on? I know that as a corporation, there's many costs for many things. Public partnerships are pertinent. But I want to make sure that the costs that we are inquiring are those that the taxpayers are asking for and not to subsidize private business if we have not made that agreement clear. So thank you again, Chairwoman, and I apologize for the confusion.
Uh, no, confusion is on my part. So thank you for your questions and I would encourage you to go ahead and send them in as well so that Mr. Jackson can answer them. He probably can't write down that quickly. Okay, great, I would love to get to our agenda now. So I'm going to pu- close public comment. Let me just make sure no one else has their hand raised here. We're in a closed public comment. And may I have a motion for the first thing on our budget here? The refund of property taxes collected prior to July 1st, 2020 totaling $6,212.61.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on? Seeing as there's no discussion, let's move to a vote. All those in favor of refund of public property taxes collected prior to July 1st, 2020 totaling $6,212.61? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone who gets?
Do you need this?
Anyone abstain? Agenda item number two, refund of property taxes collected between July 1st, 2020 and June 30th, 2021. Overpayments on the current grant list totaling $10,429.09. May I?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion? Seeing as there's no discussion, we'll move to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? And any abstentions? Seeing none? We'll move to agenda item number three. Refund of motor vehicle taxes collected between July 1st, 2020 and June 30th, 2021. Overpayments on the current grant list totaling $5,774.78. May I have a motion? Ms. Shoemaker? And second? Ms. Wetmore? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of refund of motor vehicle taxes collected between July 1st, 2020 and June 30th, 2021 totaling $5,774.78? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any? Any abstentions? Thank you. Number four on our agenda, appointment of the Finance Director. Mr. Scott D. Jackson, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Is that you, Ms. Lewis?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. May I have a second? Okay, um, any discussion? No discussion? Okay, seeing none, let's move to the vote. All those in favor of appointing Finance Director of Mr. Scott D. Jackson? Please say aye or show the thumbs up.
Aye.
Okay, do we have any opposed? Do we have any abstentions? And congratulations, Mr. Jackson. And I believe that is it on the final agenda for this evening. So I will adjourn the meeting at 8:18 PM and turn this over to Mr. McGary.
And I will thank you and immediately turn it over to Ms. Baez.
Great.
Good afternoon, all. How are you? I am Councilwoman Dominique Baez and I'm opening up the Human Services Committee meeting now at 8:18 PM. Welcome. So I will start by calling the attendance for this meeting. We're going to start with Ms. Burita Roe Lewis, Majority Leader, present. Ms. Betty Wetmore, Minority Leader, present. Mr. Brad McDowell, present. Mr. Justin Farmer, present. Ms. Athena Gary. I do not see her tonight, so I'm going to mark her as absent. My Vice Chair, Jody Klaus, present. And myself, present. We have one item this evening and that is the appointment of Mr. Daniel Hunt to the Human Services Commission for a term to expire March 1st, 2024. Is there any public comment that needs to be tonight for this? Or any other items in the purview of the Human Services Committee? Okay, we got some public comment from Mr. Scott Jackson. I'm going to give you the floor.
Thank you, I, I just want to say that I have had the privilege of working with Mr. Hunt on a number of occasions over a number of years. It is a great selection. He is a great young man with, with a lot of his sort of deep philosophical positions and he puts in the work. I, I think this is a great selection and I'm happy that he's helping us out in this endeavor.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comment coming in for this appointment item this mo- this afternoon? Sorry, deep evening. Or any other comment regarding the Human Services Committee? All right, seeing no other public comment, I will be calling for someone to move this.
So moved.
Okay. Farmer. McDowell. All right, any discussion? All right, Councilwoman Farmer, you got some discussion?
Thank you, Chairwoman. Yes, Mr. Hunt is definitely a committed community member. He is fervent on his love and dedication to the community. So I'm happy to see him do that in an official capacity and be represented. But more importantly, for him to represent the town of Hampton. So I will be voting in support of this and it is an honor to do so.
Wonderful, wonderful. I'm unsure if the chat gets submitted into the public record, but I just want to say that Mr. Rich Mutz also congratulates Daniel and says he's a great man. So I want to make sure that was in the public as well, on the public record. All right, with that being said, if there's any more discussion from the council, I will start to call a vote on this. Is any more discussion? No, okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? All right, seeing none unanimously, Mr. Daniel Hunt is appointed to the commission. Thank you. With that being said, that's our, our one item on our, our agenda today. And I will be closing the Human Services Committee tonight at 8:22 PM. Thank you all for joining us this evening and you have a wonderful, wonderful night.
Thank you, Ms. Baez and, and thank you, Mr. Hunt and Ms. Dolan for chairing your committees. And we'll see you all here tomorrow, 6 o'clock for the beginning of our budget deliberations. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Safe travels.